Welcome to the year tonight, so thank you for making the effort, we really do appreciate it. So today's meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to everyone. My name's councillor Karen McGowan and I'm the Chair of this South East Local Area Committee. A lot of you all know it as the LAC, just for sure. So before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I'll hand over to the committee clerk to read out the housekeeping arrangements. Sarah?
Thank you Chair. So just a few things before we start. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode, as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting. There's no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is just out of those doors and through the emergency exit, just there. There's toilet facilities situated in the corridor to the left and the disabled toilets are out to the right. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention is we do have hearing notes available, so if you would like one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll now go around and ask members and officers to introduce themselves. Good evening, councillor Denise Fox, Deputy Chair of this LAC and Local Councillor for Burley Ward.
Councillor Bob McKenna for Baiton Ward.
Councillor Anne Woolhouse for Baiton Ward.
Good evening everybody, I'm councillor Gail Smith and I represent the Mosborough Ward.
Councillor Mick Rooney and I represent Woodhouse Ward.
Councillor Tony Downey, Mosborough Ward.
Sarah Hyde, Democratic Services.
Hi, I'm Jane Folds, I'm the Local Area Committee Manager.
Thank you everybody. So before we proceed, I just want to explain how tonight's meeting will work. We'll deal with the formal business and apologies, declarations and minutes of previous meetings. We'll then move to a presentation on the Good Parking Scheme and we're presenting certificates to participating schools. I'd just like to say that the pupils who will be attending are from our local infant and junior schools and I'm sure you'll agree, we need to give them a very warm welcome when they're up for the certificate. There will then be a slight change to the agenda for the meeting tonight and items seven and eight have been swapped round. So item seven will now be the public question session where we'll be inviting questions from those present at the meeting and reading out any questions that have been submitted in writing. We also have two people that are joining us on, what's it called, the web? I-bred, I-bred, yeah. And I know they've put some questions in. As part of this item, we are piloting a remote participation element to the meeting and like I've just said, we've got the two participants. Item eight will be an update on the South East Local Area Community Plan and a review of the last eighteen months. But item nine, we'll be celebrating voluntary groups within the South East. Item ten will be a presentation from Elaine Davis, the Development Officer for Voluntary Action Sheffield. And for the final item, we'll break into groups for discussion on supporting voluntary groups. So, item two is apologies for absence. I've got apologies from councillor Brian Lodge, councillor Kevin Oxley, councillor Jackie Sotter, councillor Paul Wood and councillor Curtis Crossland. Item three, exclusions of the public and press. There are no items that require any exclusion of the public and press tonight. Item four, declarations of interest. Are there any members that wish to declare an interest in any items of business on the agenda? Nope. Nope, thank you. Item five, minutes of the previous meeting. So I'm going to go through them page by page for members and if you can just agree or not or point out anything. So page nine in the pack is where they start. So page nine, any comments on page nine? Page ten? Page eleven? Page twelve? Page thirteen? Page fourteen? Page fifteen? Page sixteen? Page seventeen? Page eighteen? And finally, page nineteen. So can we all agree that they're a correct and accurate record? Thank you everybody. So now we're on to the pleasurable part, which is the Good Parking Scheme and meeting our young people. So over to Claire now, who's going through a presentation. Thanks Claire.
Good evening everybody, my name's Claire and I'm a Local Area Committee Officer for South East LAC team. And I'm here today to tell you a little bit about the Good Bad Parking Scheme that we introduced this year. So one of the issues that were identified during the public consultation was an issue that the South East had with problem parking, which was parking antisocially, sometimes dangerously in the local area. One of the things we decided to do was try and find a way to help tackle this. So as a result, we introduced the Good Bad Parking Scheme. Here we go. So yeah, so we offered every school in the South East LAC the opportunity to part of this scheme that we undertook between myself and the Sustainable Communities Officers for the South East. The idea was that we would help show the children what bad parking looked like, what good parking looked like, and help them to go out within their local community to look at areas where parking was a problem, to kind of create a culture where parking was done more considerably, especially around schools where you tend to see the most problem parking in the mornings and the afternoons during pick-up and drop-off. So we've worked with eight schools so far in the South East, it's been really successful, the kids have really enjoyed it and we're hoping to roll it out with further schools over the next year. So the scheme works as two sessions. Session one is where we go into the schools, we work with an identified group of children, usually their council or their eco-council, and we teach them a short session on what good parking looks like. So we talk to them about why parking can be quite dangerous and why we want to make people park in a more safe manner. And then we show them examples of what good parking looks like and what bad parking looks like. They are incredibly adept at working out what good parking looks like and I can only apologise to the parents of these children who will now have little backseat drivers wherever they go. Once we've done that, they then create good parking and bad parking tickets. We call them tickets, obviously they're not enforceable, but the idea is that then we can go out into the local area and they can find examples of good parking and bad parking and they can put these tickets on there, just to kind of create an awareness around the fact that, you know, parking can be a bit of a problem. And again, to kind of create that positive association with the parents to try and park more considerably in the future. So these are the sessions where we go out again into the local community with our little homemade tickets, so we pop them on cars. We try and find cars that have got parents in them so we can kind of explain what we're doing there. And yeah, it works really nicely, it's a really enjoyable experience. The kids enjoy it, we enjoy it and the parents took it on board quite nicely. So the two schools that we've got today are Burley Spa and Waterthorpe Infant, who have both taken part in both sessions. So we have some certificates. So if we could have the teachers and the pupils from Waterthorpe and from Burley?
The ultimate shame is to be a parent that comes home with a bad parking ticket.
Yeah, thank you to all the schools that have taken part so far. Really hope that it's to keep on with the scheme and to keep this work going year on year, because obviously pupils move through the school and get new parents, so yeah, thank you. So we're now on to public questions and petitions, so we've received two questions in advance. So I'm going to begin by inviting the remote questioners to ask their questions, so we've got Jane Mason and Jill Green. Jane?
All first, Jane. Jane? Yeah? Hello, I'm not sure if this is working or not.
Yes, it is.
It is, fantastic. So I've been approached to ask two questions. The first one is around community centres in the S12 area and can they be opened up more to be warm spaces and to have things like dropping sessions for citizens at Bys and the such like? And the second question is around the issues that people are experiencing on Bay Screen. What is happening with regards to this and is there any way of reassuring the public that something is happening?
Thank you Jane, thanks for those questions. I think Denise has got to answer them. Was it Jane?
Is Jane doing the community one?
Are you doing the community centre one?
Okay, yeah, it's fine. Yeah, I'll answer it, thank you. Thank you Jane, thanks for your questions. The community centres are, we're all looking at them all and reviewing them. We've been told that there is a team, the Neighbourhood Support Team in Crystal Peaks that you can contact if you want to use these rooms. There's an application form where you explain what you want to use them for and why, and then that, there is a criteria and a percentage of the rental on what it, why you're using it and what it's for. So we haven't got any costings today for you, but if anybody's interested in any of the community centres around this area, you contact the Neighbourhood Support Team that is based in Crystal Peaks. There's a telephone number that's available that we can give out or it's online, you can access the form on the website. That's the community centre one Jane. The antisocial behaviour, we are aware of it, we've been, as councillors in Burley, we've been walking around Bay Screen for a few Saturdays, talking to people and realised the problem there. We have paid for CCTV on the shops, that is being monitored by our Sheffield City Council, obviously at a cost. But we've, meeting with police, we've set up meetings now where we've got partners involved, which, safer neighbourhood teams which are here and the police, the youth service, and we're hoping to get schools involved. We're meeting regularly to try and identify what's going off, why this antisocial behaviour is gaining momentum in there. But we are relying on intelligence from people coming and telling us what's going off and the police, because obviously when the police arrive, they all disperse and we do know this. So we are on with it Jane, I hope you can reassure people that have asked you, that we are meeting, we've got another meeting on Friday with all partners and obviously we are, we're trying our best, you know, to identify where the problem is, what's going on and making it a bit safer, but we are on with it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks Jane, thanks for that question. Can I go over to Jill Green now please?
Hello?
Hi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, sorry, my sound keeps going on and off, so I'm sorry if, yeah, just, I don't know what you can do if I disappear, but just quickly, I was wanting to know if anything's been done about litter and fly tipping. But I raised this issue at some earlier LAC meetings and also at the recent Sheffield Plan meeting in February, with particular reference to litter and fly tipping on the highways or at the side of roads, particularly Bocan Parkway, Donnet Squay and the A57 that goes from my area, which is Althorp, out to the M1 and then in the opposite direction to the A50, sorry, to the Sheffield Parkway. As you go along those roads, which don't have pedestrian access, you know, there are no footpaths, there are hedge roads at the side of those main roads, those arterial roads, and the litter and fly tipping that is just cast out of, mainly out of vehicles, I would imagine, is absolutely horrendous. And it looks just as though nobody cares about the litter problem that we have. I keep reporting it on the council website and nothing seems to be done. And at previous meetings, I made a suggestion when I was in one of the breakout groups with Gail, that other cities have seen some success in littering of highways by installing litter cams, which are like speed cameras, but they detect people throwing litter and fly tipping out of vehicles. When I asked if anything could be done to look at that, and I asked if a feasibility study could be done and to take into account the amount of money that the local authority spends on litter picking at the side of roads, as opposed to how much would be saved if we could reduce that problem and/or prevent it. And I haven't had any feedback about that. The only feedback I had when I raised the issue of it being not only a...
Jill, I have got officers here that want to answer your question, if that's okay with you?
Oh yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Just before we move to Jill, I'm just gonna, just before I move to Gillian, I just want to say a massive thank you to the litter pickers that we've got here tonight anyway that do it on a voluntary basis. I hate to think what our streets would be like without you, so thank you so much. But I'm going to ask Gillian Fairbrother, who's from Amy, to just fill you in on that.
Hi Jill, thank you for your questions. First of all, we do do regular litter picking on the A57, however, well I'm saying regular, it's actually twice a year, it's usually sort of like April time and then again in September. The problem is, we can't have a team that's there all the time because we have to apply for permits, so we have to close the parkway, so it's not a straightforward case of us just having a team go on. In places like Bocan Parkway, Mosborough bypass, that's a little bit more straightforward in that we have gateway teams that can go and collect the litter. But the problem we have is, we can pick up on a Monday and by Tuesday, it's exactly the same. And unfortunately, we haven't got the resources that can be following people around collecting litter, so we do do our best. I have a question about the cams, that's really something for the LAC team to answer to be fair. I do, obviously, they did have the allocation of money when the LACs were set up to sort of, to identify things, how they can spend the fly tipping money. Obviously, there is a huge cost involved in there and because of the amount of roads as well in Sheffield. So for litter pickers, I can see Sue's here and she does do quite a lot of work, sort of like in the more remote places, which is a huge benefit to the community. But again, Sue's going to tell you the same, that no matter how many times she collects, it's as bad again. Now we, myself and Scott and various other people and all the litter pickers in South East, we do have sort of like regular meetings, which you're more than welcome to attend. You're more than welcome to attend Sheffield litter pickers, to have your own patch. We do obviously, we give out equipment, bags, litter picking, gloves, the actual litter pickers itself, for you to assist, but it is sort of like, we are fighting fire really. There's no sort of, there's no way we can sort of introduce something that's actually going to stop litter and fly tipping unfortunately.
Thank you Gillian. I've got two councillors that want to come, three now. So Tony, then Meg, then Gill.
Yeah, thank you. The litter pickers do do a fantastic job and it's only fair to thank all those people that we just have done. But it is a battle, I have to say. I mean, I go out on a Saturday, most Saturdays, with the litter pickers in the Westfield community. And you've got, you can go out on a Saturday and if you walk around the estate on a Sunday, it's just as bad. And it's just about educating, I think, you've got to try and educate people that, you know, there is litter bins around, people say, well, there's no litter bins, but there are. If you look round the areas, there are bins. And I've managed to get three more introduced in, one in Halfway, one at Mossway, and one, I can't remember where the other one is, but I've just managed to get three more litter bins. If people could just use the litter bins, that, this is all about education and the best will in the world, and Gillian from Amy will back that up, with the best will in the world, you can't be walking around picking up after everybody all the time. It'd be nice if we could, but we haven't got the resources, I'm afraid.
Thanks Tony. Meg?
Yeah, it's about what exactly the general public can expect from the contract that we got with Amy in terms of keeping the streets clean from litter and various other detritus that we find, you know, knocking around. So what I would ask, what I'm asking for is if we can put on the LAC website just exactly what the contract says Amy should do in terms of picking up litter or sweeping the streets and picking up fly tipping, et cetera, et cetera, and where from. Because sometimes, there's an argument about demarcation between what Amy pick up and what the Parks Department are supposed to pick up, but I think it would be helpful so that people know exactly what they're entitled to through the, through the very expensive, a very expensive contract that we've set with Amy.
Thanks Meg.
I think we, I think at the very least, we ought to know what we're supposed to be getting.
Thank you. We can put that on to the LAC website, yeah. Thank you. Gail?
Yeah, thank you. And I'd like to take this opportunity to just say thank you to the people that pick litter around Mosborough. But specifically, this lady's talking about the rubbish that people throw out of the vans. I saw a gentleman in a van, if I could have read his registration and have took it, a whole bag of empty stuff from McDonald's, he just threw it onto the middle of the road. How disgusting is that? I think we need to be thinking at the LAC, what can we do to stop this? Because main roads do have cameras, a lot of the, sorry, a lot of the main roads do have cameras. Perhaps we need to get those children from Waterthorpe and Burley to make these people wise as to what they should and shouldn't do. It's a disgrace, but I think we need to start thinking about a solution. And I think the only solution in my mind is to hit people's pockets, because it is illegal to throw rubbish out of your car. It's catching them that's the problem. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Yeah.
Sorry please, we can't hear you. Hi, talking about litter picking, sometimes we pick up on Drake House Crescent as well as Althorp, there's one bin right at the top end, there's not one bin anywhere else and the litter on there is horrendous.
If you let us know where you think it would be a good place to have a bin after this meeting, we'll talk about, we'll sort that out.
Thank you. Thank you. I've got everybody's hand going up now. If, I'm just thinking, we're going to be moving into, is it all about this topic? Right, okay. This lady here, you have your hand up first.
We're just wanting to invite the school and the schools to get involved with litter picking in Waterthorpe, because we've got quite a big green open space and it's constantly covered in litter, the big field, next to the Tora Building, so our aim is to start doing things like that from our little community centre. We've just had stuff delivered which we are going to get on to do it.
Thank you, thank you for that. So people that want to speak, there's a lady on this, somebody's hand on this side, yeah, and then there's somebody at the back on that corner. Can't see the people.
Where do I speak? I'm Sheila Dyson and I'm associated with the Hackenthorpe litter pickers, who do a fantastic job at Hackenthorpe and they're out every week and sometimes during the week. Yes, litter is a problem, but I feel very optimistic about Hackenthorpe and the area that I do on Mansfield Road and Burley Moor Road. We do it every week and it is not a mess. My main problem is getting fly tipping picked up. And Amy have told me they will only do stuff that's on the street or on the pavement. If it's not on the street or on the pavement, they have no interest whatsoever. So it's also getting the council, I think it's the Parks and Countryside Department, but I've reported stuff on Burley Vale Avenue and Shirebrook for weeks and weeks and nothing has happened. So I'd really like fly tipping to be picked up much more regularly and much more often, whoever does it, because that is an eyesore and a health hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let people know, because we've got, environment was one of our themes that came out of the consultation and we've got so many fantastic groups from people that are dealing with orchards and tree planting and litter picking, all environment. We have got an environmental group for the South East, so all these issues can be discussed and we can move things forward. So if anybody wants to be on that and part of that, then please share your details after the meeting and we can make sure you get the emails. So there's a lady in the top corner.
Sorry, we litter pick on Althorp Fields and we just put, we have our own bin bags and then we just put them near a bin, but we weren't aware that there was a, like a litter picking group that we could be part of. So just really wondered if you could put the details on the LAC website or email them out, that'd be great, thanks.
I'm going to take this as the final one on this topic.
I'm Kay Pinder, live on Bay Screen. We actually live on the shops that suffer my antisocial behaviour, but the litter is, oh god, you can't even, the council will come and empty the bins, say on a Tuesday, but by Thursday again, all are overflowing. So we'll have two clean days and then five days when it's awful. But I'm wondering, the people that own the shops, is there anything that can they be brought into it? Because you'll find that it's two shops, a takeaway and a convenience store, and all the litter is coming from, especially kids. There's a bin right there, but they'll just walk out and they'll throw it on the floor. Can anything be done to maybe ask the shops if the litter's coming from them, can they chip in, clean it up as well?
Thank you. We have got, Dan, I don't want to put you on the spot, I know I spoke to you earlier, but we've got Dan from Business Sheffield, I don't know if that's something that you, I know you've been working with the businesses. Yeah? Or any shops really.
Yes, so I think we had a conversation a couple of months ago about shops on Hackenthorpe and also at Fretchville, Bay Screen as well. So what we've done is had a conversation with those shops on Hackenthorpe initially, just have a bit of a chat with them about if they can start to have conversations with their customers about what they need to do with their waste when they're walking out of the door. In relation to Bay Screen, we are down there on Friday so we can start having conversations with the takeaways and also the convenience stores as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. When I said that was the last question, I meant that was the last question that I was going to take on, so. If anybody else has got questions they want to ask tonight, then this is your opportunity. Before we break into groups, there's somebody at the very back.
Just wondered if you'd take a contribution, I didn't get here in time to ask you. Is that okay? Okay, well, this is not my area of the city actually, but I'm here as one of the people who's tried to rescue our trees, and I wanted to know if people are aware of the Mark Glovecock report. I've come to an area I don't live in, I do visit, because so much propaganda was put out that was misleading and wrong. And I would just like people all over Sheffield to know that the report vindicated the people who tried to save the trees, that for four and a half years we had a huge battle. And the report seriously questions the behaviour of councillors from this area, and it also says that there are serious and systematic failings within the council that need addressing. So I'd be very grateful if people who perhaps read the Star and heard the radio and thought we're all a load of middle class baddies would make time to actually read what Mark Glovecock has said, and for councillors perhaps, to read it and address the hurt and the problems that were caused over four and a half years in our areas and on our streets with 35 policemen, 20 security guards and mayhem. And people, the council asking for custodial two-year sentences for people who stood peacefully under trees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's up to anybody, if anybody wants to read the report. It's on the website. It's on the website for people to read. Thank you. Any, sorry, I've left it, thank you. We're closed here. No, no, no. I don't, I think people can read the report and make their own minds up, thanks Mick. I don't think. No, no, thank you, thank you.
Hi, yes, so it's Luke. Just before my question, I just wanted to clarify how much money we were given as a lack to invest.
Right, we are going on to that in a minute, and I'll go through what money we've had throughout the year from different parts.
Okay, so is there a total?
In, I've got a total of all of that, but we've got a hundred thousand pounds.
Okay.
And then we'll go through and tell you where we've spent that.
Yeah, so this is in preparation for how you're going to go through and tell us how you spent that. What I'm just wanting to know is, well, I want to be kind of assured that we're getting a good return on our investment of that hundred thousand pounds, plus any other expenses that may have come in. And when I'm looking for that balance, it's on out, so a year ago, we'd look at the process of whether we've got investments.
The question, what we hope to, the outcome, cutting the costs, so it was, in the future, did the council, new things, or similar, between that people, as before. We're moving, to review of the, which leads in, this means, so, you know, it's going to, for me, love you, but you will have, like to sort of, see some, people, so we just, Tony, committed, oh, I'm going to, okay, being, empty, and, where, people to make areas, community, local people, what, what services, but, depends what, and, and so, background, I'm sure, but in case, facilities, these days, home of the, the park, the wide range, it's, up in centre, a, southeast, and, similar, you're not aware, east, state most, relations, in the heart, eighteen, less, it's, and, southeast, predominant, ninety five, there are, in the south, majority of detached, just, and, portion of, in the second, nineteen forty, things that, that we did, be happy about, lots of, of our, place in the, area, over hundreds, such as a picture of the village, on the board, other country, popular, build, percent, these degrees, that the public, think they have, average, but this is, people, trees, and, climate, capturing, second largest industry, next slide, very committed, what have you all, with, I would say. I've not got it. Yeah, we start, and, units, there is method, online, face to face, we work with, in fact, of the council, that we have, we work with, residents, where you've, find out, about their, look at, and, altogether, referred to, uh, community, nation, that, the area, then, both of that, community, and, to people, if you're not, very committed, required, meeting, what, move around the, the, as web, try and move, that we can, the ball, to attend, so, um, minutes, single time, in this present, will be, as an, we're in groups, um, have, like, on, of the, that back, um, session, as I've said, this part, um, partner, having all projects that we've, that's, partners that we've, so different, we've, earlier, as you said, we should, grow, um, prices, and, what we're trying to, so what, that's important, that we, that we've got, something that people, we see, in the, they, have each, location, people, dialogue, committing to, as well, as to, money, that project, um, from, that we had, and projects, of all the, talked about, if anybody, breakdown, of what, hundred K, we answered, earlier, I, to, towns, target, in issue, these, three years, mentioned, the areas, litter picking, with others, we've worked, metal, enforcement, how we can, councillor, they are, are putting, different methods, there is to, hardness, events, I, take, I to pay, I was to take, within four, that we, somebody talked, was it, trying out, that, previous enough, but that is, that, okay, a thousand, the local to six, to celebrate, with people, that was, is already, right, ten thousand, allocate, then, out, and, in a little, like, key, is, provision in, 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 evident that was, important to, that, that there was, the pound, our local, that, provision, the, the, of, I think it's, that's not the, community group, that, patient, date, which is, part of, around, there's, have some, the local, and backing, to help, so, done, a lot of, the council, the next page, so what people, community, friendly name, and that, highlights, over, there were excellent, that is low, they like, bases, travel room, like the good, to be, was, it invades, with problems, we've been doing, goals and that, in a main, that came, I wanted to see, the street life, a more, present, and we do, and crime. So as we said, the key, the key was, to say, been constant, there's been all the, that, projects, to deliver, the good part, goals, through that, within the, keep working, had, so, were speed, off with, and did, that's why I didn't, interesting, was, helps for, surveying, speeding was, and put, we could add, how, and, that was out, think that's been, day, but, right between, the villages, that road, that, one, there, all, had the police, what, was it, plus there's no, a real big, we, resources, the day, so, that evidence, each wall, some pounds, some pounds, not take, and, done, a, in town, five, the and, across the road, when, it was happening, the issues, so, so most, boards have, so got, um, faces, where it shows, the, like, data, well, so it's, and at the, are you, my name's, I can hear what, out, the rest, on the, the ridge way, station, effect, with speed, none, multiple, reached, sorry, but it.
We've uh, if anybody. Share it. Was a breakdown. So if you want. That out. You're at. That's the. Speed. They collected. Every sixteen. It's a fun. Agents with the. Also do. They now it's. Yeah, well, that. I'm coming. Over twelve. See. Bees with every. Good to see her. At eh. Imagine that we. Certainly for. Eh. Want to. That. Production. We we. With. Got. And. In sort of like. Costs on. Data. Within the. That is just. How. The going. Feed watch. Involved in. And welcome. Okay. Work with you. The people. Um. With the cap. Is the people that. Through. Running letters. Does that go. Being they can. Out the far. With the local. Have to put this. Police where. Clearly. And that they're. It sounds. You have. Them but they. Do. Finds that. They would send. Right what. Data. Get that in. And data. Everything. The dog fat. We can undergo. Then. But for. Line data. Is or in. So for. There are. And. To that. Twelve. Ward. Period. Um and. So there. There'll be a report. To see how. Some. There yet. That those. So that was. City. And most of them. That were waiting. Been putting it. Put in the cap. Right and we'll get. Me off from. Instances. So we'll.
To be a. What you do. Spent after. It'd be a very. Like to. They sit. The more on. Keep doing. But in effect. So we have a link. Move this. Onto that. Completely.
Thanks. Doing the. Counsel for. Right if. We ready.
Recently got. Out. Em. You can count. That's all one.
Sorry.
Special cap.
Uh.
Yeah. As to the. Because. Is it. Control. If it's. Sound. Feeling. Eh but. The camera's not. Was good enough.
Back to doing. Because we've got. On base. Uh. We. Tristed it there. Had a problem. By shift. It. They. Can further. Please. Production with. Um. Read up that. Ask you po. Just as long as. To get on. Volun. Next slide. Um. Relationships. The groups. Um and. Night is. People to. Be retired. Which we just want. Please. Stop work. Just a bit of time. Thanks. Working. Been able to. And yeah. Testament. In working. Them. Out of work. Uh to. So uh. Put those. Thank you. So. And which is a. Voluntary. In the south. East. You to all. Cross share. We wouldn't be. Uh. Library. Ex. That you all. You come for. Or is. Be my time. You know. I mean one of. Said to me. So he's I'm not. But yes. Make tea. Here. Volunteers. In everyone. Chef you. Let's see if it went. And I also. Was eh. Being because. The timer. Giving. So. About yourself. For everybody. Please. Some more. Right this is. Today. It's groups. You know. Where it was. Alst. Just like that. And I know. So it's. Free time. Talk about that. And now. And over. Ain't it. Yes. Or is that. Field and. Retention. It's him. Camera. Sorry I'm. Thanks. Um. Nice to see. Um. See this. For. Girls. Don't know. Hope it bad. But that. That's. Support. Community. Of. Community. We've got. Um. Lots of projects. Next. To. Project. U G's and. The. In community. Port manage. With a team. For. The develop. The. And community. Uh. Provide support. To. City group. Early step. Right. Helped. Row. Uh. People who. Um. Can make in that. Maybe group. Things. And. Normalize. Group together. Some of the things. Out. Chance to. Apply for. Their support. So. That's. Uh so. Groups. Hi. Groups. So we. You. Polish year. Be clear. You want to do. That. Do. Develop. You need. To be in a. Um. Able to. Uh. But you. You can then. In. Uh. Develop. It help you to. Smoothly. And to come. Legal. Uh. Uh. Ensure. If you're going to be. In the community. Or. Is. Do to. Tell us. Once you've got. Things. Um. Things that. Um. And. Who carry. My father. Together. Can help. Do. Thing and. Is. Really good. Able to. Yeah. Them of your act. Um. To. Or to pay. As uh. You might need. Is uh. Uh. Your group. Missed. To deliver. Um we can. Chambers or. Just as a. You to under. Liberties. Liability. Your. Structure. That is a. Met of rules. To grow. But. Structures. Might be best. Do. If you want. Then we can. Do. Or. Manage anything running. Um. With policy. That's. So that you. Be risk. And. Sort of. Um. We can help. Create the. You do. So if you do. Watch out about. So. Be able to. To. Ignore that. So. That you're doing. Really big. Uh get more and. More and more. Of things that. Uh. We can help. In. Your own community. And in other. Other org. Doing similar. And things that. We do. We run. Um. People together. Um with some. To bring. Don't know if. Are aware. Guide. Lots of groups. Yeah well. Of with. So we. Maximize. Your effect. To help. Each other. And again. Being in a. And so. Again. But. Um. And then we. Support. Kind. And to you. And we all. Individual. To really. Vol. Um. Hearing. We can. Planning. Best. The. Arrange. Benefit. The. So benefit. Individuals. Perion. And sorts of things. You just look. In social. And. Um. Some upheld. It. Look. That might. You. Do job or. All range. Evolve. Uh. Volunteer. Think. Need for. What you're going to. Um. Use them at. You know if you. To. Volunteers. And you have. The same. Cost. Volun. The. That you're doing. Or. A. Are in time. Um. The you. Be in the. Volunteer. Miles up. Would be someone. And here that. On the ex. Unity to. Um because. For the bus. Would pay. Cost of. Such club. And. And tears. Tears might. Actually it's. That I. Actually don't. To because. It's. Censes. Opportunity. Was if there's. To play a. That in. See. Kind of stuff. Help you to look. Meaning of. Always need. Some need. And to do. Support. So. Have a. Volunteer. Contact. They need any. Um so. If. We. Help to. Um. Dear role. Organize. Tears yeah. So uh. About what. Volunteers. Type does that. Bush. Benefit as. Doesn't. Experience. Sometimes. Up and say. Actually I don't know. Everybody's tell. I'm doing. Thing. Six. Of. I don't know. Be. You know. So. Minds of. A. Uh. Way of. To benefit. Sort of. Money. Bits and. And be things. Uh. People. Community. It might. If you need to. Be. Sort of. Sort of. We want. Maybe if. For any. Not being. Do. You do something. To turn. Bit of tea. So to be. You know. Well with. People as. That to. Supper tea. And all those. Um. But any. You only. Own. Faith in. Starting to. Um. That says. Treat volunteer. And what. You. Uh. This and. If anything. Tears where. Uh solving. We've got. People who. As you want. Um. Have. Rooms that. Please so. Tears and. Um. Long to. Meet. In the same. Share. News. Get help. Sing the band. Well. Tear roll. We've got. Us. That. Uh. Our building. Been. And. Volunteer. And advertise. So you. Put them on. Uh. We can help. And. We can help. All of. The. Go on to. Sites. We've got about. Hundred and fifty. Be an advert. So you. Like. The kind of. Year. Environment. Or it could be. Older people. You. The. Is that like. If you wanted. All those. Uh. That you. But it can. That enough. We try to. We're. Volunteer. That need. Tears. Benefit. Fully volunteer. Bulletin. Um that lists. Volunteer. Volunteer. In a. Goes into a. Line. At coffee. Reculated. Cities. Is. Uh. So if you do. Tears. Place. Volunteer. So unpaid. Um. Clearly drop. Potential. Can get. Fear advised. Adviser. They advise. They themselves. So they're. With. About. Um. And you're looking. And to. Find um. Days we. Managed to build. Nothing. One day a week. It's all for. Is open. Um advice. And in a volunteer. If you want. This about. Um finding. Or any. Do with. You know man. Um that. Some content. Through that. I think. That we can. Tell that. Yes that. The um. As email. Got someone. Who. Except. Monitor. Box. To. That's about. Port. Uh. Send it. From that. New York. Right. Um I hope. Thank you. Misses. Oh. We're. Yeah. No. Do it to the. From. Yes. Is what this means. Now this. Uh. Advertise on. Instagram. But we don't. Surgery. Right. So. I. But. Somebody's. Not that. Today. It comes. Jack. Can I just.